Hold this public hearing to order April 11, 2022. It's for bylaw twenty dash twenty-one dash twenty-two zoning bylaw amendment. But committee order. Then the law. It's supporting documentation for bylaw two zero two one, two zero two two. In his zoning bylaw amendment to rezone land within the city of Thompson, reserve from residential high density zone to public institutional zone, lots one to three, block one seventy-nine. Plan eight four eight MPT, North East One Quarter, four dash seventy-eight dash three W P M. We've been in all this given of public hearing, I'll go to administration. File.
Also, yeah, this plot of land is approximately a six point six acre plot on the east side of Princeton Drive South. The land is currently forested and undeveloped. Immediately across Princeton Drive is the home of the E F M buildings in the Hope North. So our plan here is to rezone that area from residential high density to public institutional to create a bit of a health medical campus. We've already got one, one developer that is interested in a lot and there's actually an option put forward. So this, this reason will facilitate the further sale of that one lot and potentially the other two lot for medical health accounts.
Thank you.
Just note, this is a public's opportunity to come forward with presentations for or against this proposed development or just probably only.
Have you reached, received any letters to or for against this proposal today?
I've received.
Thank you. So number three, we're going to receive presentations in favor or opposed to this development in the audience. Second call, presentations in favor or opposed of this development? Third, final call, presentations in favor or opposed to this. Seeing none, call for German. Council Alstair. Council McFirdle, all in favor? Here, thank you. We'll move on. Call the meeting to order for April the fourth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting of council at seven oh three P M. I'd recognize we're in the traditional hand of Mr. Switzer, Queenie, homeland of the making and that we are all pretty people. Thank you. Like to call for approval of the agenda.
What a privilege.
Council.
Mayor, thank you. I go through the agenda this weekend, I found out this, one of the bylaw that I don't understand, I want a clarification. Based on last meeting, I was asking for withdrawal and I'm a majority councilor supported, which is me that will have to bring it back to. I wasn't asking for table. The whole entire request never mentioned tableing. And you call for a question and we all voted for, I counsel, Alstair, myself, counsel, the phone, counsel, uh. Deputy Lamar and counselor. Approved that agree with that, so I don't understand why you sit on the resolution agenda tonight.
So that I don't want to actually remove from the agenda. So we have to bring it back to get it off our books, we either defeat it or carry it, one or the other.
Now. Did you guys consult with the province about that process?
No.
So I'm sure that you know this is the right process.
The process would be based on our own bylaw as well as the municipal. Sorry, the process would be based on our own bylaw as well as the guidance we have from the municipal.
Okay, but I did not ask for table.
So I think the point that was made is that if something is there, it still has to be the passed by a public vote, either defeated or maybe passed. Because it is going through its first.
And I can, can get mysteries and pointed to be the bylaw that stated in my bylaw here for that top particular issue. So I can. Do some studying myself, educate myself.
What were you just asking?
Because the city manager said this under the bylaws, so I had to, administration wanted to meet directly, where's the bylaw status, so I couldn't educate myself.
So we all have access to the bylaw, on this moment, I can't get that to you, we can get it to you very shortly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I think there's some confusion. Around the process, what happened, my memory serves me right. Counselor Wong did ask for it to remove. We did vote on it, but after we voted on it, there was a conversation around bringing it back with a state to like, like members' right. If you had a table of it, then absolutely you bring it back, but if you're asking for removal and there was a vote to remove, then I don't know what process you're using to bring it back, you don't bring back things that have now been defeated, that motion, that resolution, I should say, was defeated. And then there was a discussion after that about bringing it back, and I think that was the inappropriate, in my opinion, it was an inappropriate discussion that should not have taken place if we all agree that the resolution was to remove. That's what it was, then why would we bring it back twice, I, I, I don't understand that.
Thank you, we're going to.
Yeah, so the resolution or the motion that evening was to remove it from the agenda. The thing is, the bylaw already had a first read, so to defeat a bylaw, the other has to be voted down or has to be brought through for further reads. So yes, it was removed from that night's agenda, but it would still come back, a consideration, because it's still in the process of the bylaw.
If council doesn't want it, then they could just defeat it.
What a privilege. So I still never get the. Extra section from the administration coded for that part, it just based on interpretation, I'm not satisfied with that, I just want to be comfortable about exactly. Where's written that way, so at least we all on the same page.
Madam Mayor, and please, if the administration could correct me, I'm okay with that. I believe what we were debating that night was the first reading. What you have on the agenda tonight is the second reading. So we removed it from the agenda. And it was the first reading, why are we bringing back the second reading, I guess that's one of the confusions. This was the second, was it the second that we were debating?
Second reason.
It was the second.
Okay.
Karen, council can just remove it from the agenda if there's issues, you just need a motion to remove it from the agenda today.
If we remove it from the agenda, will it be brought back again?
As the bylaw is not defeated, it would have to continually be brought back until council defeats. Or passes. Given first, it's a lot of files.
And the bylaw has to be passed by the end of April, as there's a timeline to it, has to be passed two hundred and eighty days before the next election. Thank you.
Anyway.
Yes.
I still like to see the law state that way of interpretation from administration. Because we cannot just interpret the way that as we go, it happens so many times, I like to follow the rule. And basically, we just restructure the whole entire thing. And yet, we all, we do to follow exactly what is written, if it's not written, I suggest to consult with the province to get a clarification. You just start to see that in our bylaw about this part of. When we draw.
Thank you.
So section four point six covers how an agenda is set up. There's multiple steps of how an agenda is set up, but once it's been given its first reading, then council either has to defeat it or pass it. Going through the bylaw process that's set up in the news block. So regardless of removing from an agenda one day, it still has to come back.
Thank you.
Okay, as these are points of privilege, worship your elders, you're able to rule.
Okay, good point, I, I do think it's based on the agenda tonight, and if it doesn't, you know, it either gets defeated or goes ahead to the third reading. Any other questions? Next, we're going to move to community comments and feedback.
You still need the approval of your agenda.
Right, that's good, Council Alstair and Council McFirdle, all in favor? Thank you. Any comments, feedback?
Roll out a truck, twenty aisles street. Put all my glasses for this, what was his name again? Hold the microphone. On tonight's agenda. There is a. A. There's a memo from our city manager. And it's on the gift. Associated with the grant in lieu, the gift from valet, and of course, there's no information as usual on the grant in lieu or the numbers on the gift, because that's the way we do things around here, keep the people in the dark as long as we can. But in this memo. It says Valley Canada Limited, comma, the city of Thompson, comma, the school district of History Lake, comma, and the local government district of History Lake, undertook negotiations for several months towards a letter of understanding for a grant in lieu of taxes. As part of the negotiation, the tentative agreement was reached outside of the grant of, in, granted in lieu of. Granted in lieu for Valley Canada Limited and the city of Thompson dander into a gifts agreement for multi-year funding towards the construction of a new Thompson Aquatic Center. Development of the gift agreement has been finalized and approved by Valley Board of Directors. Now, how is it that it can be part of the G I L negotiations? And then it says, right after that, that it is not, it is outside of the grant in lieu. How can it be both ways, is this not an oxymoron here? How can you have it both ways?
It's as simple as there is a negotiation underway, and as part of the discussions with valet, there is offer of a gift that would not be tied to the grant in lieu. It's a separate gift that came out of the negotiations.
So that, that then makes it part of the grant in lieu. When, when a committee was, was put together here for the grant in lieu, it was not to negotiate something on the new aquatic center. It was about the grant in lieu, you don't have these little sidebars off to the side, you'd call that either a. An addendum to the, to the agreement or a bribe, that's the way I see it.
Excuse me. It definitely was.
If someone can offer me a better explanation, because I have a dictionary and I can go by the English language, I'm quite good at it.
Thank you. You listen, listen it to the agenda tonight, you'll hear your explanation, sir. No other community comments, feedback?
Sure. Okay. On what Counselor Wong was getting at with him withdrawing the. The item off of the last meeting, when it comes to a withdrawal, he is allowed to withdraw unless there is someone opposed to it, and then once someone is opposed to it, if there is a seconder, then it stays on the agenda. Otherwise, he is allowed his withdrawal of his motion.
Thank you, sir. Melanie.
All right, I'm just trying to read the bylaws where Duncan Wong's. So according to this, it says. I live at the table equals to suspend further consideration of something. Above list motions and complaints are listed to establish point of order presence. When any one of them is pending, you may not introduce another that is listed, but introduce another that is listed above, so therefore, if you are tabling motions, you have to take. Take that one off first, right, prior to moving forward, so by tabling, can you clarify what's happening tonight on that motion?
When you're tabling a motion, it automatically has to come back to another agenda, that wasn't Counselor Wong's argument. He was arguing that he hadn't tabled it, that he had just discussed it, and that's why we have no rule, it'll come back, and then the council as a whole can vote. Or yes, if they wish, or for.
Okay, so with handing out a sense survey, do you think that a week and a half was long enough for something so important like this? Shouldn't you guys have taken into consideration of mailing each, I know it costs money, but doing this survey a different way, because there are elders that do not have Facebook, there are people that don't listen to what's going on in our community. Through social media, so is there, was, could there be a consideration that in moving forward on something so important, and you want the community's input, maybe. A newsletter or a pamphlet to each home addressing what's going on in the city, because a lot of people don't go on social, like, a lot of people don't go on social media, a lot of people don't keep up. And are just talking to a few people that they even know what was going on in their community.
Thank you, Helen.
Yeah, so the survey was available here at City Hall on paper form, it was also advertised in the newspaper on radio, and it was on our social media and our website. We've used these forms before in the past, when we did the community wellness and public safety advisory, we had sixteen percent of the community actually responded to the surveys, so it's up to each individual if they want to respond to the survey, but it was made available in multiple formats at council direction.
And just further to talking to people about this, I did attend for another function. A seniors gathering, and there was in excess of forty-five people there, and I did mention it to them and had talked to basically almost all of them in this too, so we did, as councillors, it was our duty to, to talk to people, get their dreams on.
I think just to give the opportunity of administration to clarify, sixteen percent cited was not for this survey, but another one that they were successful with in the past. Just so that the public isn't confused. That's correct, the response rate on this one was about one percent of the population, whereas the one for the community wellness and public safety was about sixteen percent, thank you.
Thank you, settle, answer your question.
You did just that, thank you.
Just on what was stated on the first part of what you were saying, when Counselor Duncan Wong at the last meeting was asking for the withdrawal, he also called a point of order, which was not ruled on, and it was a, a railroading, is what I witnessed, where it went straight to tableing, where Counselor Wong was barely in the equation, even though it was his ask for the withdrawal.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Time is up for this, we will move on to adoption of minutes. Five point one is the regular meeting of council, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. Resolution two zero two two zero six four, moved by Deputy Mayor Lundmark, accepted by Counselor Valentino. Here is resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in Council Chamber City Hall, Tom to Manitoba on Monday, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, be adopted as certain. Administration?
Nothing.
Council? Oh, the question, all those in favor? Eric. Five point two is adoption minister committee of the whole, April fourth, twenty twenty-two. Resolution two zero two two zero six five, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lundmark. Here is resolved that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of council held in council chamber, city hall, Tom to Manitoba on Monday, April fourth, twenty twenty-two, be adopted as certain. Anthony?
Nothing.
Council? Over the question, all those in favor? Six, we're going to resolution, six point one is a resolution to look from the table, resolution two zero one two one six two, extension of lease agreement for Manitoba Air Services branch. I have a motion to look from the table, council approve. Council Valentino, all in favor? Holds. Eric. With that, we will move to the resolution, resolution two zero two one, one six two, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Elsberg. Whereas on October nineteenth, twenty twenty, council passed resolution number twenty twenty one six seven, approving to extend the term of the lease agreement for one year between the city of Thompson and Manitoba Air Services branch for lot two, plan number five oh nine four P L T O North Division, consisting of two hundred and fifty thousand eleven square feet. And whereas Manitoba Air Services Branch has requested to extend the term of the subject lease for a further one year commencing October first, twenty twenty-one, and expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the cost of the lease is five thousand thirty-six dollars pursuant to the city of Thompson's annual fee and fine schedule. Now therefore, be resolved that council extend the term of the subject key for further one year commencing October first, twenty twenty-one, and expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two for lot two, plan five oh nine four P L T O North Division, Manitoba Air Services branch, administration?
Yeah, this is the land lease that Governor Bear has held for a number of decades, okay, this is just the, the rule. So there are, it was a question from council regarding some. Our attack. As per the land lease, there is a requirement of the land lease that requires any lease holder to have the land completely reclaimed prior to the exact release, and. It's very capable of part of this asset management capital. I think the part I believe is of the government is currently working on a phase two. Yes, if that's something that should start for the next.
Thank you. Council Valentino?
Thanks for, thank you for the further clarification information, I'll be supporting this at this next.
Any other comments? Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did do some talking around with people that related to this issue, so after talk, after we had a conversation, basically, I think the problem is going to have it down at the end of the year anyway, so it's going to be clean up, so after the conversation, I feel more comfortable and support the resolution as well, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Frank?
And to Madam Mayor, as part of this process, we haven't actually seen a lease agreement, so what occurs, what I, you know, I have to take it at face value. Administration, I'm also well aware of the type of work that the province does when it comes to liabilities. I, I'm not very happy with the level of agreement that we have on the table that we've seen. This, unless I'm wrong, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Mayor, we haven't actually seen the lease agreement with the, with the province. Many of my fellow councillors will know, we've run into quite a bit of legal trouble in the past, where we've had some omissions like that. From what I saw on paper there, and I had asked administration at the end of our, of meeting last week, I hope, the final line of that very sparse document. And there was still some confusion there, for that reason, I won't support the lease renewal, I fully understand why this is almost a housekeeping item that needs to happen. But I think the city has been burnt a number of times on these type of issues, so I won't be supporting, thank you.
Thank you, any other comment? Counsel Alstair?
And Madam Mayor, I will ask the question, have our administration seen the lease agreement that we're here approving tonight?
Yes, we have a copy of that lease agreement and likely we brought it forward for council review several weeks.
Just to follow up. We, we do a lot of this, so sometimes it all hurt, when we're, we, we've tabled it, now we've brought it back with her into the future, we would attach it again, and not saying they, they were brought forward, surely dead. But this is a long an agenda, and, and so it would be nice to review it again, because you've tabled it. And secondly, based on what I do know about it, similar to Counselor Wong, I mean, they've committed to cleaning up the site, they've committed to removing some buildings. And why in the world, when we take the five thousand plus dollars, when they should be giving us money, which we haven't seen an increase since two thousand and sixteen, a lot of our funding, so whatever we can get, we should get, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments? Counsel Frank?
Yeah, just quickly, I'm, I'm in agreement with moving forward with it tonight, I'm satisfied based on our discussions last week. Committee of the whole, where we learned from administration that the terms of the lease obligate the party leasing the site to reclaim any inherent concerns, and they will be working with our administration as that moves forward this summer, so obviously, thanks.
Thank you, I'm confident our administration will follow up, and as it is a complete demolition of that project, it's actually going to be a large project, so, thank you. Seeing one more question, so call that question, all those in favor? Opposed? Eric. Six point two is a resolution to approve and extension, oh, sorry. Yeah. Six point three is a motion to look from the table, resolution number two zero two two zero five eight, credit arrangements. I have a motion to look back on the table. Council approve, Deputy Mayor Lundmark, all in favor? Eric. Six point four.
Yes, I think you were supposed to ask anyone. You, you didn't ask anyone.
Okay, I apologize, I thought it's all, yeah, for the last question on lifting this from the table, any opposed? Counsel Alstair? Also, long, so, but mostly is good, thank you, I apologize. Resolution two zero two two zero five eight, approved by council, moved by council approve, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lundmark. Whereas section seven, one seventy-three one of the municipal act provides authority for municipality to borrow money by resolution for operating expense during a fiscal year, providing the amount borrowed does not exceed the amount collected in taxes and grants in lieu of taxes into the previous fiscal year. Now therefore, be resolved, the council authorizes the credit arrangements of three million dollars overgraffed between the city of Thompson and the Canadian Imperial Bank of Commerce. And be a further result, that all sums borrowed under resolution will be supported by a charge upon the whole of the revenues of the city of Thompson. Administration?
I'm sure, yes, this is, I am speaking, I am with our lately. The current rate that we pay on this, this account is minus point five percent, I would just currently, currently two point seven percent, so maybe paying two point two percent. However, we have not accessed these balances for twenty eleven and twelve, so we don't access these funds, it's just a requirement of under a.
Counsel approve?
No, thanks for the clarification on the, on the information question.
Thank you. Any other comments, Counsel Alstair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm not going to go on debate over this one tonight, I'm just going to echo some of my remarks from previous meeting on this, I, I still say that it should be an R P, I know we've talked about it. from previous meeting on this. I I still say that it should be an R P. I know we've talked about it. Secondly, I don't think I asked the question in previous meeting. When was the last time we used this credit arrangement? So it's been years since we used it. I'm not sure we need it. I understand why you might try to get it if you didn't have any money. But as a council, I believe that if we ever got in trouble, we could go to our reserves if that's what it took. And so it's not what we want to do. So therefore, I want to support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Council Wong.
Recordable, please.
Thank you. Seeing over the questions and a recorded vote, I would like to ask who's in favor of this resolution? Council approve, council Valentino, Mayor Smook, deputy mayor Lenmore, council McMurdo. Opposed? Council Fountains, council Wong, council Ellsworth, council Cooper. Eric. Thank you. Six point five is a resolution authorizing administration to enter into a gift agreement for the new Thompson Aquatic Center between Valley Canada Limited and the city of Thompson. Resolution number two zero two two zero six six, moved by council, mayor Lenmore, seconded by council Colbert. Being it resolved that the council authorized administration to enter into a gift agreement between Valley Canada Limited and the city of Thompson for the new Thompson Aquatic Center. Administration.
As noted, as part of the granted negotiations, council struck a committee to negotiate with Valley Canada along with other partners towards the grant and lose. As part of the negotiations, the committee managed to negotiate additional funding gift agreement towards a Thompson aquatic facility. Through multi-year funding, so that the council has the opportunity to build that facility. The gift amount would be five hundred thousand dollars a year over four years for a total of two million dollars after four years. The gift agreement will come into effect once it's approved by resolution of council, as the agreement has already been approved by Valley's board of directors. And that would run from the years twenty twenty two through to twenty twenty five as presented.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Lenmore.
Thank you. I'll definitely be supportive about this. Hopefully, we get together. So there's step forward to our aquatic facility and it was everything with our grabbing negotiations of this and understand that some you don't see it as a grand loop, but it's one of the things that Valley identified as important to do and that will support, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Council McMurdo.
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm just would like to say that I'll be abstaining from debate at all, just as I'll employ on this.
Thank you. Council Wong.
Usually I do this other than saying congratulations. I also strange for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment, council Ellsworth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe if I heard correctly, I am going to if that there would be discussion, I would hope that the other councils before me would have taken the time. I think that the public always needs to understand negotiations, what takes place, whether it's right or wrong. From someone that spend most of his adult life negotiating contracts with major companies, not just ballet, but other major companies. You don't understand some of the negotiations. Negotiations, you have a collective agreement. There's also discussions outside of the collective agreement that employers are not prepared to have it. In some cases, it was unionized grievable. In our case, where we would take them to court if they had failed on something. So you get things out of them without them being old to a contract like we are with the the Granton Loop. I will tell you, we had a good negotiation committee, in my opinion. Worked hard at it. There was some great presentations. And I believe that a message went through very clear that our community is in dire straits and we need certain areas. We need help with certain areas to fix it up. And this happened to be one, the aquatic facility. What is new or whole? In this case, it specifically talks about new. We have nothing to lose. And the day that we say that we want to accept two million dollar gift in a community like Thompson that is certainly underfunded in many, many areas, then we better set up straight. I will support it because and I'm not one, well, you don't support this, I'm not supporting that. That adds too much at this this chamber. I'm supporting because it's the right thing for the taxpayers of Thompson that they don't have to come up with another fifteen percent or whatever that equates to for two million dollars. Two million dollars is a lot of money. A lot of money, no matter what you say. So I think the public do deserve a an explanation. Whether they agree with it or not, that's irrelevant. When you go into negotiation, I'll finish and wrap it up with this. It's not just what you're sent with. It's what you can get out of it to help those that you represent. And I was quite pleased on this one piece, and I'll be speaking later to another piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Valentin.
Thank you, Mayor Smook. I think this is a great thing. Thank you to Valley Canada Limited for this gift. I think all gifts should come with a thank you. Also, a thank you to the school district and the L G D who sat at the table and helped promote that this is the needed project within our city. This is a good a good evening tonight and a good story to tell. This also gives us the opportunity as a city to leverage for more dollars when you get a gift of this size. And we had many other projects that we're starting to see come to fruition from the negotiations with the Granton. And some of them are the gift for the asset management, the gift to the Y W C A. So council Ellsworth is correct. They did hear us and they do see the need in many areas in our city, and this is one of them now. And we've seen others. And I believe the relationship we have moving forward is projects we can still have those conversations moving forward with Valley. So thank you once again to Valley Canada. I know to their support also has been to the Winter Wonderland for this new aquatic facility. So definitely a huge thanks on behalf of myself and definitely be supporting it. Thank you, Mayor Smook.
Thank you, Council Wong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I probably agree some of the comments from council Ellsworth earlier. And yes, it's a gift. So why are we turning down, right? It's a gift. So but the only concern I have with this gift agreement is like, they only stated for the purpose. To me, at this moment, the purpose is still up here. What we are trying, what they are trying to or what we are trying to accomplish, which is the new aquatic center. Until today, we are six months away from the new election. And we still have no commitment from any level of government yet. Yes, is on the website. You can apply many times to one for the grant. Doesn't mean that we could get approved. It's just a one step foot, in my opinion. So of course, this agreement, I will definitely accept it and and agree with it. But the only thing, like I said, I pointed out earlier, is the 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 qualification is going to be new. And the public might not know if let's say by the time you don't have the new aquatics and the ready, that money go back to them. So that part, I hope everybody will understand that part. Otherwise, the 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 intention is great. Everything is great. So yeah, that will be it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments, council approve?
Yeah, just reiterate what was said. I think we had a really good negotiation team and this is something that from our fruits of our labor came out. And I'm very thankful to accept this as a as a gift to the city of Thompson.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. I agree. This is a great gift to the city from Valley. It also shows Valley's commitment to the project and that helps us sell the project when we are at the government levels and other levels looking for funding. So it's definitely all round. And as council Ellsworth said, we got our gift agreement and then we continued further negotiations to see what they could do to help the city. And they were very forthcoming. And there's also the opportunity, not part of the G L, that we can approach them about different projects over the next year. So thank you very much. Saying no further questions, I'll call for the question, keeping in mind that council McMurdo and council Fountains are abstaining as employees of LA. All those in favor? Opposed? It's Kendrick. Thank you. Six point six is a resolution to approve the letter of understanding between Valley Canada Limited and the city of Thompson from municipal tax and funding arrangements, twenty twenty two through twenty twenty five, Granton Loop. Resolution number two zero two two zero six seven, moved by deputy mayor Lenmore, seconded by council Valentino. Whereas Valley Canada Limited, the city of Thompson, the school district from history lake and the local government district of mystery lake are signatories to a four-year letter of understanding regarding municipal tax and funding arrangements, two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty two. And whereas the city of Thompson, the school division and the local government district of mystery lake have concluded discussions with Valley Canada Atlantic regarding a new four-year letter of understanding effective January first, twenty twenty two to December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Now therefore, be it resolved, the council approved the letter of understanding between Valley Canada Limited, city of Thompson, the school district from history lake and the L G D of mystery lake for the municipal tax funding arrangements for a four-year term commencing January first, twenty twenty two and terminating on December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Administration.
Yeah, so noted as our council formed their valley, their negotiating team along with the school district, L G D of mystery lake to negotiate a grant and leave of taxes for the next four years. The negotiating committee was able to secure the same funding as the previous grant and lead, which equates to three million dollars a year over four years for a total of twelve million dollars. That was negotiated and approved by Valley's board of directors and now requires approval of all the signatories by their own resolution process. So there's a package in front of council tonight to approve the city of Thompson's agreement of this. And it will be circulated to the other signatories for final approval.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Lenmore.
Now again, probably be part of the team for the grant loop. It was a good experience and it was well thought out and it was appreciated how much we put together plans make sure that we had some high principles. We thought that the Valley would be interested in sharing with with us. We listen to them, they listen to us. It was, we appreciate thank Valley Canada and the Michigan School Board and the Michigan School Vision and the L G D, sorry. Thanks to to the team that went forward. I'm sure council has more elegant things to say shortly. But I definitely supported this. It was a good experience. I've done all kinds of negotiations that were a lot different than the way this rules are. Easy to deal with the contract, I'd say.
Thank you. Council McMurdo.
Again, I'll be abstaining from the debate and discussion as well as the votes for this item. Just the thanks to most negotiating teams for prioritizing public safety and the improvement of that as they did in the previous item with recreation. Thanks.
Council Ellsworth.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Let me start out by saying that any negotiations, whether big or small, is not always easy. When you're taking on a giant, I was told at some point, I think it might have been prior to us going in, it really wasn't negotiations. It was negotiations. Let's be very clear about that. And when we went in there, we were already behind the the goalposts, in my opinion, because if you can recall, there was two articles in editorials by our local newspaper talking about really, we weren't getting a deadly squat. We might get the million dollars that were entitled. Anyone else can remember that. I can remember that. I read both of them. So 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 you've already got an involvement from the outside, which is not always good. I will tell you this. I have had a lot of teams over my years of negotiating. This was a good team. It had good administration support. I was honored to to do the presentation and and co-shared that with Mayor Smook, who kind of took it off after I did the presentation, which I appreciate along with our our team. And Valley found out that again, the city of Thompson needed help, not going backwards, but forwards. If someone ever asked me in the public, do you think we got enough? It's never enough when you've got the mess that we got with infrastructure over sixty years, never enough. I believe we're fortunate, the fact that we got a good presentation with all of our administration, that we got our message true that there would not be any agreement if we were going backwards. That was clear. That was loud, very clear. We went in asking a lot more than we got. But when you look at what we got, the gift, and I think was councillor Bell Dino that alluded to some of the smaller projects. That's money to save the taxpayers that we don't have to go after. You're never happy when you 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 don't get as much as you want. But I'm going to tell you right now, I have no issue. And I have, and I want the public to hear me clearly. I have no issue tonight supporting this resolution, knowing what we were facing when we went in. And I'll tell you, if we had not done the presentation that we did, we would be back here tonight with the tell between our lives looking at something else. That's where we would have been. And so I personally want to thank the the team. We may not always get along. We may have our ups and downs, but in regards to this process, we we were good. We were good. There was there was no infighting. There was lots of clarification. And Anthony, for you and your team, I really want to tell you that I appreciate the work that you did. Without the work that that the administration did, we would not be where we are tonight. We need that. Every team needs that. So thank you, Mayor Smook. I wish we could go back next week and negotiate again because they met up with 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 twenty dollar nickel now. We might get a better deal. I'm not sure. But we are where we are. And again, in closing, I am I am pleased to where we landed on, knowing that we always need more. Thank you.
Thank you, council Valentino.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Smook. Yeah, I just would like to say that I'm definitely going to be supporting this also. And I think that for Valley and how our team worked, that they definitely have a presence here in our city, and I think they're open to conversations. And we as a team had like councilors were said, we had a really good amount of projects and discussion with them. And I think that moving forward, you can see tonight from the commitment from Valley in these two resolutions that they are committed to our city. And I think that this is a sign of some of the good things that we do have going on with our city with the with the road infrastructure project and the water infrastructure project. All the things that we have happening right now in our city this year, this is just another indication of Valley's commitment to the future here. So thank you once again to Anthony and your team and to to the team that we all work together on and to the school district and L G D and of course to Valley and to the public to know that this is finally resolved and it's a good evening here. It's evening and definitely going to be supporting it. Thank you, Mayor Smook, and thank you for your leadership to this. Thanks.
Council Wong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to point it out, number the negotiation, the G I L prior to my term and throughout last term and this term. The one prior to us, we get a six million dollars a year. And we also get three million dollars for infrastructure. So total of the whole entire negotiation, which is from Mayor Tim Johnson. We are getting twenty seven million dollars for that particular G I L. So last term, the mayor Dennis Bensky, and we got eighteen million dollars out of the contract, the whole food G I L, which is three mil, six million for the last first two years and three million for the rest of the 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 two years. So this time, I did a math. So we are getting fourteen million dollars in total. So from the last one, we lost nine. From this one, we lost four. That's included the two million dollars key from the G I L, the key for the new aquatic center. I'm not necessarily disagree with some of the comments from my colleague. Yes. Yes, it's a money that on table that had helped. But in my opinion, when you come to negotiation, it's supposed to be better each time. But the number doesn't show that it's better. Yes, we get something out of it. I agree. Maybe that's the best we can do at this scenario. And last time, when they announced the GIL, valley was announced giving out billions of dollars to the shareholder for profit. And this time, prior to this announcement, valley just give a big bonus to a, what you call AIP, to the staff, so. Yes, maybe it's generous enough, and also I want to point it out, another thing about fifty-six agreement. And they established a fifty-six agreement, they're based on zero work rate. So now, as you go, we get it better and better, but also mentioned, suppose we increased it, integrated mining. And to me, there's no longer, is this. Smell that we fired, we tear it down, we just come to commission. So to me, that contract is breached. And I did mention so many times, even from last term. When we come to accept the GIL, I mentioned to the mayor Fensky, I say, why don't we go for assessment, right? That way we don't need to negotiate every time, we don't care about how the valid operation, whether they make money or they lose money, that's assessment there, same as anybody else in this town. And he agreed with me, he said, that's up to the next term to, to go and do it. So beginning of the term, I did mention to mayor Smook, I say, are we going to do that? Now it's three years down, we still haven't started any inquiry or find out whether it's good or bad. We have no clue whether it's better or worse, it's just based on what we see right now for the, for the presentation for the GIL. Is it good? Perhaps, maybe, but in my opinion, we didn't do our, do the analysis of negotiation, we did not, well, sorry, I should rephrase that, the negotiation was great, I think, but we didn't do our job to find out other alternative, where is a better way? I also said, I also talked about it, the only way we can get that happen, we need the province to help. And the last minute, which is December, when you start entering the negotiation, the province don't have enough time to prepare that. So anyway, I will support this because it's a money on the table for us, for the taxpayer, but I need to point it out all this. And hopefully, my term is up again, hopefully the moving forward, we're going to do some study. Is it better for assessment or is better for GIL for city of Thompson? Hope people hear me loud today and tonight, and I'd like to move forward, thank you, man.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. I need to address a couple things there. First of all, in negotiations, there's a lot of things said. And to councillor Wong's point, and he raised some very valid points. There's things that we're not going to raise there in a regular council meeting. I would suggest that we do that in camera to fit that. But I will say this, because it needs to be said, so that the public understands, a lot of these things are raised and needs to be worked on going forward. And secondly. It is an agreement that expires, and so let me ask you, Madam Mayor, with your experience, not putting you on the spot, if we didn't have an agreement, what's valet's obligation to the city?
They only have to pay us for the actual employees on their payroll, which is less than one million dollars, I think it's around eight hundred thousand at the moment.
And I believe that to be correct, and, and, and so you're caught in, in, in a position, the other point I like to make, you know, if you're going to talk about, you got to compare apples to apples. We went in there, councillor Wong's right. Smaller shut down, refinery shut down, registry shut down, basically half the people that was negotiated previously under these contracts is gone. So nineteen fifty-six agreement for the public record, in my opinion, as one councillor doesn't exist, it really doesn't, and we need to do something about that. So in fairness to councillor Wong, I do agree with you on that, but you need to understand what happened with him, the confines of negotiations, thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Councilor Wong.
Yeah, it's not all very clear, obviously, with them paying my paycheck, I won't be voting on this one. I will say though, that I think it's pretty clear that the fate of Thompson rests with valet to some extent at vice versa. And I hope this is a point to help Thompson. I also want to extend a thank you to those of you who did heavy lifting on this. Obviously, in my position, I just want something that I can say, I appreciate your efforts in that regard.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Councilor Colber.
I'm quite good in agreement with all this, it's all good for the city. But in their letter to Dear Mayor Smook McDonald, Mr. Beckburn, they talk about fifty-six agreement, this is what they say, in accordance with the terms of the town site agreement between valet and the province of Mexico as amended. The fifty-six agreement. Now, what's been amended? What is changes to that agreement?
Seventy-six.
Fifty-six, you know, they said it's between government and, and valet, and it's been amended. I don't see no amendments coming across our. Best to talk about.
There were amendments made in the fifties and sixties between those agreements prior to the city existing. So there was a township, and then it eventually became the city, and one changes made between the province and that time, equal limited. But it really, it's, it's an agreement between the mining company and the province, and the rest of us are minor signatories to their agreements.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Saying no, nothing further. I do thank Council Ellsworth for leading our team through this negotiation, and definitely we all had the input, we all, we made up our just projects, everybody worked together very well, and I do think as to councillor Wong's remarks, it's definitely, I think we have more appetite in the next four years to work on better ways of doing things, and it's been agreed to by all parties, so we will be, you know, exploring that, you know, in cameras and special meetings and that. And compared to the number of people, even for our last agreement that we got, were, you know, we've lost over, I think about half, better than half than the last agreement. So if you go per capita, that works for valet, I think we've done very well, and they, they do know, which definitely you could feel in the room, that with the pool project with some of the other projects that they committed to, and inviting us to put future projects forward, valet is definitely committed to our city, and I like to thank them too. So without further ado, call for the question, all those in favor, councillor, councillor Lepardo are. Not voting with this, so all in favor?
Carrie, thank you. Six point seven is a resolution authorizing administration to sign the special arrangement letter with CIBC. Zero two two, zero six eight, moved by councillor Ellsworth, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lon Mark. We resolve that council authorized administration to sign the special arrangement letters with CIBC effective February first, two thousand twenty-two, for a term of three years. Administration, yes?
Okay, so review with the, with our institution on our accounts, of the current cap on our interest rate, which is the banker's, this has reduced the amount of interest that we saw in the past, so for the existing bank account, we do have creating this new arrangement letter, gives us the ability to not limit the interest that we can receive. It is a three-year term, however, it's not something that's required to maintain, but anytime the council wishes, they can move themselves from that agreement, there's no legal ramifications to that. The information shared in that agreement regarding our bank account is available to the public, it's the bank account information is shared every single week, so however, that's not, that's how it's been we. Yeah, so basically, this, this current arrangement letter gives them a currency bank account, and it moves the cap that we have currently, we get prime, that's one point eight five percent, which again, primes two point seven, give a twenty-five percent interest rates that are current.
Councilor Ellsworth, this mover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, a couple of questions, I guess, first of all. For the chair. I, I need to understand this clearly, so we passed this tonight. We decide as a council that we want to do an RP to all the banks in Thompson, this doesn't stop us, this is not a three-year solid agreement, as I understand.
Yes, that's correct.
I thank you, city manager, I, I struggle with this because I mean, you vote against something that gives you a better return or rates, I went to the old agreement. At the same time, I, I will say it publicly, I, I really believe that we should be, and I know we're talking about doing that, doing this, why ask the question, doing our, it's been years, we've been dealing with this banks for many, many years, and that just seems so unfair when you got a number of banking institutions, whether it be banks or credit union in the city, that should be given an opportunity. So I will wait to see what the rest of the councillors got to say about it, but if I object to it, it would be that for that reason, other than agreement, agreement, I would argue that it's better than what we have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor McWhorter.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, it's kind of to echo some of those sentiments, I think if this arrangement offers a chance to bring in a little more interest for the city of Thompson while not binding us in any agreement, as we shop around maybe for financial services elsewhere for a better rate, I, I don't have any problem with it, so I'll be in support.
Thank you, councillor Valentin.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, yeah, I have no problem supporting this, and thanks for bringing back more clarification and information for council, as we've been discussing this a few times. So, and I think the bankers acceptance rate, to be noted, is for large transaction business only, it's not just something that we deal with on our own in our day-to-day banking. So definitely, I mean, we've discussed this, we probably lost some interest in the last couple of months, so I'm thankful to get this hopefully passed tonight, and if you want to move forward, looking at other banks, I mean, we're not tied into the three years, that's pretty clear, so yeah, I'll be supporting it, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Frer.
Yeah, thanks again to administration for the clarification, and I'll be in support of this also.
Thank you. Councilor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this moment, because we never tender out, I don't know whether it's a good deal or not, based on what we see, I don't know, because we don't have any comparison. And second of all, I'd like to have a clarification from you, Madam Mayor, because I heard the administration say, the check register always show those account anyways, there's no. So I, I believe the check register do not show account number, it just show the name, who they write, what issued to. So I, I want a clarification when I heard the administration say, those on the check, check register for those account number, so can I get a clarification for that?
Our Jenny.
I'm sure the physical check themselves, so each check was nailed down, has a check, because all the data is based on the.
I, I think the concern that we had last time is not about our check, our check account, is all this account listed on the page with other control, other. What are the other organizations, which is we had, like golf, golf club trust account, Sue's trust account, Interfask, those, those that want to be concerned, because listen all the account number and the transit number on that page, is nothing about the check register.
Thank you, Anthony.
Go ahead.
So yeah, so just all those, there's to be a chance to make caps, they might be in the name of trust, but there is to be a chance to make. We do have multi-faceted security on all of our accounts, so there's no way to access an account without multiple login information, so you couldn't, nobody can go and access our accounts and get money out, it's two-step, two-step authentication, for each person to live in, there's a double step of authentication. In addition, there is Canadian laws has provided protection, so if anybody did, we have a certain number of ways to report that to the federal government, so it really is a concern, top to the bank, United Association being.
Anthony, I'll go with that.
With respect to the questions about the RFP services, the administration is bringing information to camp, council upcoming meeting, I believe on the twenty-fifth, as there's no committee the whole next week, so there will be information provided that council requested, to give that background, to understand what the processes and the pros and cons of doing that, so that'll be brought forward on the twenty-fifth. So that's an outstanding question, it'll be brought to your, the, the information will be brought to you later this month.
Thank you. Councilor Wong, your record.
Appreciate the update, so anyway. I think this is a housekeeping anyway, and based on what the administration explained, so we can terminate something we don't like or whatever, without any. More, okay, so I will be able to support this for now, thank you.
Councilor Frer.
Madam Mayor, I, I, I'm a little concerned. I'd like to make a friendly suggestion. I, I would rather, much rather, this is a regular council meeting, there's nothing stopping any councillor from sharing any of this information, to really look out to me. I would much rather in the future, when we discuss some of these things, that the, the counts, stuff of that would be in camera, that would break, we, we would have already have seen it. So then it would be a matter of reading the resolution, horrible, we wouldn't be discussing that part of it, that's just my own feeling, because regardless of you need signatures or whatever, we, we got people, I believe you've been asked yourself there recently, they, they.
Couple times.
So people can ask your counsel, cause you're nothing but trouble and everything else. So my friendly suggestion would be that in the future, when we get into that much of the detail on accounts and that, that will be done in camera, and then a resolution brought forward at regular meeting, that is very limited to what we discuss at this meeting, because there's nothing stopping me from going through this right now and talking about who the count numbers, and what, what, what stops me from doing that? It's a part of this discussion, what stops you from doing this, because I know the difference. But if we had a radical, which we've never had on council, they could do that. So that's my suggestion for the future.
Thank you. Snowwick.
Yeah, so administration, when we review this, we always try to review based on what's in the municipal act, what's allowed to be in camera and off, so we'll have a look at that again.
Thank you. Any other comments? Saying no, call for the question, all those in favor? Carrie. Six point eight is a resolution to approve transferring outstanding utilities to taxes. Resolution two zero two two, zero six nine, moved by councillor Valentin, seconded by councillor, whereas municipal act section two fifty-two-two states a change referred to in clause one, A, may be collected by municipality in the same manner as a tax may be collected or enforced under this act. And whereas clause one A deals with the powers respecting works, services, utilities, and states, two fifty-two, one, a municipality exercising powers in the nature of those referred to in clauses two fifty-two, B, C, and E, may set terms and conditions in respect of users, including A, setting the rates of amounts of deposits, fees, and other charges, and charging and collecting them. And whereas the city of Thompson has been unsuccessful in attempts to collect the water utility revenue, now therefore be it resolved, the council approved the transfer about standing utility invoices for the following utility accounts contained in the attached schedule. Administration?
This is a yearly ghosty resolution that comes forward to do the transfer for taxes, as it's a provision of the municipal act allows to do so, administration has determined that once these transfers occur, the vast majority of the utilities are collected to this transfer to taxes process.
Thank you, councillor Valentin.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. I'm definitely supporting this, because as the city manager just spoke to, when this happens, it does have more, you see more payment of these outstanding utility, however, it is concerning, no doubt about it, that there's this many accounts that have an amount owing, interesting that the dollar amount, though, is less than the last two previous years, but the number of accounts is greater. But definitely, this is a process, and it does help get this outstanding amount paid, so I'll be. But definitely this is a process and it does help get this outstanding amount paid. So I'll be supporting this as is tonight. Thank you, Madam Smith.
Thank you, Councilor Alfred.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. This is a very troubling resolution for me and I'm sure other councillors. I get it. People doesn't want to pay their utility for whatever reason. We need that some way of collecting. Understand that every one of the elected mayor and councillor in this chamber have been recipients of people out there that have been trying to work to solve issues with their utility. And I think those probably should have been left off and worked on to try to help them. And I know only, only this last week. I mean, by me being in favor of this as a councillor tonight, I know I'm working taxpayers that, that truly wants to pay their bill. But because they've had issues with or with the meter, whether it be the billing, whatever it is. I've got pages of it. So does the rest of the councillors in this chamber. I would have much rather that someone that had no complaint about the utility but yet refused to pay. That's a different story. So they should have been taken part in category. They never made no attempt to pay. There was no issue. There was no issue that was identified with their meter or anything else. I get that. People should pay their utility. But when you got people in this city that are suffering financially through possibly utility that they may not hold and now you want to force them to pay it anyway, and then they've got to decide whether they're going to pay rent or eat. I in good conscience can't do it and want to. Understanding we do have to have a method to collect. That's not my issue. It's those people that we need to be those taxpayers that we needed to be working with to resolve these issues. And this is a big can of worms that, that can be opened up that I don't want to open up every night because there's lots of issues that we know as council. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
I believe people can still come and make arrangements and payments after the fact as well. I believe the way that these systems work and I'll have Jenny correct me if I'm wrong. Is that you either have to transfer all or none. You can't pick and choose names almost like a tax sale. So that's my understanding at least of how it works is that we couldn't negotiate individuals off, off the list.
I'm see, so there is actually people that do have these arrangements makes, they are on the list so that they have some proof in the letter that they contacted the financial manager and they requested a payment. That was something that was once investigated. As well as if there is, these accounts that were due, the customer wasn't put to health. So there is someone who was aware of some issues and then generally some questions.
Councilor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Every year when it comes to this resolution, I always trouble. I always feel like something that I need to speak about it. And so far, I don't see any evidence to say when the tax sales happening, people come and pay because the amount ever since two thousand eighteen is always over a million dollars. That's a huge number. Often I ask the question. Is that people just did on purpose? It's not to pay, just to boycott or protest? Or maybe they cannot afford. I remember no long ago, we used to have sixty cents cubic meter. Now it's over three dollars. So somehow there's some, something is due to that. Another thing that because of the bylaw law, we do that to put the utility into our property tax. No other utility company in the world that can do that, only Thompson, only because we have that the power under the municipal act. So I, I think it's a bad policy, in my opinion. And should be separate because you can see the list of the people that are always provided by the administration. A lot of, lot of, lot of them is from rental. It's not the owner. So now the owner had to suffer the consequences. I think it's not right. Again, I think it's because it's under the municipal act and under the bylaw. So we have to follow the bylaw. And best, get rid of it. So anyway, Madam Mayor, I think the numbers is troubling me. The number account from last year, it jumped like four hundred. From nine hundred seventeen to thirteen hundred thirty-six. There's a huge jump number. I don't know what the, is that a trend or is that someone trying to do something? I don't know. Because the numbers scare. What if one day it become four thousand? What's that mean? I asked that question last time. And I seen some, some of my colleagues try to do something about the utility, but it's still not moving forward yet. Yes, we haven't moved, but nothing moved forward. So I hope somehow the remaining terms, we can do some impact to this particular issue. And other than that, I think I have no choice but to support because under the law.
Thank you. I think Anthony would like to clarify one of your statements.
Yeah, this is not unique to Thompson. This is a power that exists on the municipal act. It's my understanding that all these policies use this when they're unable to collect to the utility in terms of meeting and working on utility issues brought forward by council. Council's directing me to meet with a group of landlords, which I continue to do. And my next meeting is tomorrow. So as I go into council, once I'm done with those series of meetings, I believe there'll probably be thirteen separate meetings. They'll then be providing council for a report on what, what the recommendations are coming from that group.
Thank you, Councilor Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a special meeting of council where we discussed issues with utility bill. Like, we all agreed. And I think what councillor Wong was alluding to and correctly, if I'm wrong, was that we had agreed as a council that we would set up a system where people who had issues with their billing could come to some resolution with the city. We know and we've all, it was my, my understanding, again, anyone here can raise their voice and argue otherwise. Was my understanding that we all understood there's a problem. There's not just one problem. There's many problems with the way things are billed in the city and the utility itself and sometimes, sometimes the infrastructure, other things like that. When we had that special meeting, I was hopeful coming out of it that not, not naively thinking that we would have a process right away. But hopeful that we would keep pushing to make sure that that happened, that the administration didn't even raise that. And that was by motion in council. That wasn't just an informal process. There's no way else for this, knowing the system that we have. I think that it's unfortunate that we would send, when we know that we have problems, these outstanding amounts to taxes where the individual has no choice at that point to either pay or lose their home. I hope others feel the same way, given the fact that we've had this meeting in public. All agreed. Thank you.
Councilor Wong?
Yeah. Just, as councillor, as you said, and Councilor Ellsworth flew through there. I don't want to mix two things up right now. It's getting the behind onto the textbook. But we're aware of and we discussed it in past administration to we discussed issues with utility anomalies and we asked and tasked administration with giving council some options to dealing with these anomalies. I hope that we continue to push forward on that and with our own ideas that people are send us something as well. What I'm saying is that we're not trying, we're not letting this go. We've got to come up with some solutions for some of those anomalies that are pretty people. There's for the most part, major spark, they most of those are regular and people are paying them. I don't know what's going on right now. All we have is luckily the COVID. People in a bad way. Got to keep pushing forward and utilities, utilities, we have to make that water, we have to finance our water treatment facility or at least water treatment facility, which is a bad way. It's new. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilor Mark?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that councillor Tom is, is right that that was my understanding too, that we all kind of recognized that that we did need to develop, you know, a criteria, a policy moving forward to resolve the utility disputes in the city. And I, I'm sure as we're all aware in agreement tonight, that we're not going to lose sight of that. And we're going to keep that pressure up over the remaining months. But I will be in support of this tonight to move it forward with this tax.
Thank you, Councilor Alfred.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd actually like to see this go back. And the people that we're working with that we're trying to work with got issues, that there'd be a separate list for them because it's just not fair. That, that, that we're only people accountable. Can you imagine a four thousand dollar bill show up in your mailbox and you know that you do not owe four thousand dollars and someone's trying to force you to pay? Well, you'd be forced to get a lawyer, you're forced to do things. I feel as a councillor, when I knocked on people's doors and sort of represent them, that's what I'm doing here tonight. I'm representing them. And I'm telling you, it's wrong. It's wrong in every sense. That we're going to put those in the same category. Those that don't have any issues, I agree with you. We should collect the utility through the tax process. No issue. But there's those that want heat after they pay this, or else they may not have a home after they pay this. I've seen some of those numbers. They're outrageous. And you bring, you come here and I don't think you got to do it because there's a process. I'm asking, I think we should send it back. Identify those that you are working with, those that you know about, that you got trouble with and, and take those off the list and bring it back and all that. Gladly pump my hand up twice to support moving forward, but I will not support it like this. It's just, in good conscience would not allow me to do it. Just want. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ballenke.
I just wanted to clarify with our CFOs. My understanding is what she said earlier is that those that are being disputed have already been removed from the list. So this list here would not have them on there.
Thank you. I, I know this is the process we've been following and I agree. We also have to, when it comes to rates and talking about rates, we've got to remember that everything has to be sent to the Public Utilities Board. Basically, our, you know, utilities have to pay for themselves and the utility board has to make the recommendations. They come back to us as to what our charges are going to be. Thank you. Councilor Wong?
So Anthony.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I just want another clarification. I understand the, the tax issue is under municipal act. But to roll the utility to the tax, you got a special arrangement, which is approved by us. Am I right or wrong? Just, just to understand that part.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow what you're saying.
That tax issue is always allowed under the municipal act, tax, the property tax. But the utility rowing to the property tax is a special arrangement, which is approved by the Council of Thompson.
Yes, that's what it says here that you're allowed to pass this resolution.
Yeah, it's allowed. That's why I'm trying to, yes, make that part clear. It's not like it's always allowed, but it's just a special arrangement. So anyway. So I, I hear councillor Ellsworth talking about, so are you suggesting make a motion to table or what?
Your time to me?
Yeah.
To the Chair. I, I, it's, Madam Mayor, here's the problem I've got. I've got an email, which I can't speak to because it would be wrong. It would be wrong. Wednesday, last week. Wednesday, and a substantial amount for this person. If I knew whatever that, that these names were removed and that's an in-camera discussion, then I'd have no problem supporting this. No one. But I don't want to walk out of this chamber tonight with someone possibly that's in this situation listening to us and saying, thank you very much. Now I'm forced to pay something that is not being settled. That's what I trouble with and I will not support it. And yes, I won't, but a motion to table this until we, as a council, got that information.
Is there a second or for the motion? The vote, votes to table motion?
We need a time to, we need a date for my comes back.
Next, Council meeting?
We won't have a committee the whole meeting between.
It would come forth on the April twenty fifth.
Madam Mayor, prior to that whole happening, I'd like to make a point and privilege to clarify something. Administration had commented, both CFO and CEO, with respect to the process, I want to make sure it's clear and fair. Our understanding, as we all heard here, was that certain individuals who had billing issues would brought them to the attention of, I guess, the CFO or some other individual, were not put on this list. Is that process well-known, well-documented with the public at large? Know that that's available to the, I'd just like that clarified before.
Thank you. Jenny, Anthony, want to be exact?
It's really anybody that's on it, but that's what the issue is with that billing. Some of them don't. I just want to see that a motion to table can be interrupted.
So. Okay, so councillor Ellsworth, that we made a motion to table this resolution. Is there a second or? Council Wong, we're going to vote all those in favor? Hold. Eric to table till day forty third.
April.
You seem to be right here for a while. Point nine. Is a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the lease of the digital mailing system. Administration? I have, sorry. Resolution two zero two two zero seven zero, moved by Council Ellsworth, seconded by Council Cooper. Be resolved that council approved the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award the RFP for the supply of digital mailing machine to Pitty Bowls of Canada Limited for a total lease price of sixteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty cents with additional taxes for three years as pretender file number one oh eight two two.
Yeah, this was listed by the purchasing department on behalf of the city for the mailing machine as an RFP. There were two proponents that responded, Quadrant Canada and Pitty Bowls Canada. As noted in your package, a recommendation purchasing agent is to award Pitty Bowls Canada Limited new board as they achieved a score of one hundred percent on their evaluation.
Thank you, Councilor Ellsworth.
I'm okay.
Any other council comments? Seeing that, call for the question. All those in favor? Six point ten, a resolution to approve the additional funds for resolution to approve the additional funds for the purchase of new fire apparatus. Resolution two zero two two, zero seven one, moved by Council Colbert, seconded by Council Wong. Whereas in December fourteen, twenty twenty, council passed resolution twenty twenty two 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 approving to proceed with yearly budget approval for a maximum of nine hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of new fire apparatus. Whereas on December fourteen, twenty twenty, council passed resolution number two zero two zero two two three approving the recommendation of the fire apparatus to Fort Gary Fire Trucks for their tendered price of seven hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars plus applicable taxes as pretender file number two zero dash one two nine eight six. And whereas during the inspection of the fire truck, it was identified that additional items are to be included to ensure the apparatus work at full potential in our northern climate. And whereas the cost of the additional items will be an increase of eight thousand and forty-seven dollars. Now therefore be a result of council approved the additional funds of eight thousand forty-seven dollars for the purchase of the new fire apparatus.
Yeah, this was reviewed at the last committee. The whole, it was noted that upon the final inspection down at Fort Gary, the fire chief and the mechanic and others noted that there were a few critical items that were no longer part of the the bill for this fire truck. So their request is come to council to add these back in at the cost of eight thousand forty-seven dollars.
Thank you, Council Cooper.
Well, I'm agree with this, like this, but I think, I think this one was apparently on the, by reserve and then the venture. Am I correct?
I believe one of this is funded by, partially by reserve. I believe one of this is funded by, partially by reserve, public safety reserve. And the rest would likely be funded by surplus, general reserve, depending on council budget deliberation.
No, the venture was, because I think you.
Originally, there was a debenture and council sent that back to the administration and said no venture.
I agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just need a explanation, I guess, if you if you read the resolution. The budget amount was well in keeping for this, I know what the, and I guess the reason you need the additional 8,000 because of the temper, is that why? Because, I mean, we're we're like 100 and give or take 3,000 dollars less than the budget amount. Is that why you need that?
That's because council originally put the budget amount, which is part of the financial plan, but then awarded the RFP based on the price that was given by the company. Because now there's changes to what the award was, you have to do another resolution to add that cost, even if it was still within the original budget.
Need to follow up, thank you very much for that explanation, I I kind of thought this was certainly when it comes to the safety of our firefighters and anyone else that's in those jobs, I I certainly support this, I think it's a good thing and many times that we can afford to to upgrade those, we noticed statistics around the amount of time that they spend on ambulance calls, fire calls. So absolutely, I will support the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, I just want to say, good due diligence on fire chief Lloyd for noticing this before it actually came and know, after the fact stuff, so good work to him doing his due diligence, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, yes, it's nice that we've caught it beforehand and we get the stuff that we need as it does mention in here, related to the northern climate, some of it, so it's a good call. And I think fire department is looking forward to this new piece of equipment in future. Over the question, all those in favor? Resolution to cancel, April 18, 2022, committee of the whole meeting of council. Resolution 2022072, moved by councillor Valentino, settled by councillor Cook. Whereas per section 9.4 of the Organisation and Procedure Bylaw, council by resolution may change the location, change the location, time, date, or cancel a regular committee of the whole meeting at their discretion. Now therefore be resolved that council canceled the April 18, 2022, committee of the whole meeting, administration.
There was just noted at the last committee, the whole meeting, that a large number of members of council will be traveling on the 18th to attend the AMM and our quorum is doubtful for that meetings. Therefore, the recommendation brought forward from the committee of all, is that the next committee of all, April 18, be canceled.
Thank you, councillor Valentino.
I thank you, Mr. Smith, yes, all these partners, as Seaman, you're noted. It's the Association of Municipalities Spring Convention. And it's really great to see so many of our own councillors that put forth their needs to attend, so I'm in favor of council today, thank you.
Thank you, any other councillor comments? Councillor Paul?
Madam Mayor, I certainly support not having a meeting, given the whole amount of people on site.
Thank you. Any other? Thank you, and I think one of the upsides to attending the same AMM is a brand and it's it's a good chance to get planning for compare summer work that we all have ahead of us. I think all the councils across municipality, we have a lot of the same concerns, so it's be good to be at the meetings and do some strategic fun. Call to the question, all those in favor? Here.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, prior to you calling up by law, I'd like to raise two points of privilege.
You left part?
To raise two points of privilege. Forgive me for not having done it earlier, I didn't want to take away from the good news for the pool. With the first one would be earlier on in this evening, we discussed the the land lease. I was discuss, or mentioned from the administration that the lease agreement was made available to councillors, I have rechecked because I didn't see that. It's important to me that I do the best job possible when I sit here, I'm not suggesting I'm 100% sure, but 99.9% sure that 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 information did not exist. It's important to me because should there be something that occurred there in the cleanup, I want it to be known that I raised this as an issue. It did not come to council as far as I know, November 15th, it was first brought forward. It went to a meeting of council in March, neither of those two had the lease agreement. And neither did the meeting of the council at the whole, we didn't have today either. So I don't, it's there, I'd like that reflected in the minutes, Madam Mayor, if that's possible.
Okay. I would like to add to that, I think when we got that lease agreement was prior to that and like when we first started discussing this agreement, but closer to last fall, we're back that when we were still having our committee meetings, that it came to the development review. If you remember us having some discussion on something like that, but we can put that we haven't had it at a meeting since.
Yeah, the November 15th meeting, which was the first regular meeting of council where that was brought forward, did not have that. So I'd like that reflected on that.
Okay, thank you, Tammy Scott, that.
Thank you, and my second point of order was, we had a council, as a council, and and also in November had decided that we met up at a public town hall with regards to the pool. It's, the position of councils changed. However, that discussion was in public with a public decision made with direction for council to to have that the decision otherwise, or alternate discussions had occurred in camera. I don't believe once something is brought forward out of camera, that you can discuss it in camera. I'll leave the particulars to other people to argue about, I just want to point out that I'm not happy with that. I believe that the city of Thompson deserves to have that information, I realize that someone out today, I'm very happy for that. It's more particularly the procedural issue that I have a problem with. Issues that are public cannot be brought back in camera, if my understanding, thank you.
Thank you. Moving into bylaw. 7.1 is the second reading of bylaw 20212022 zoning bylaw amendment for KTC Medical Center. Resolution 2022073, moved by councillor Wong, seconded by councillor Valentino. Be resolved the bylaw 20212022, being a bylaw of the city of Thompson to amend the city of Thompson zoning bylaw 1891-2012, as amended by rezoning land within the city of Thompson from regional high density zone, the public institute zone, be given a second reading. History?
Yeah, so further to comment earlier, this is a 6.6 acre plot. We're going to be resolved from presidential identity to public institutional. I mean, the last row is public institutional where two mill facilities are. So we will allow that area to become a kind of a head.
Thank you.
Just to note that the public hearing was held tonight properly as required under the fine act. And there were no representations for against that.
Thank you. Councillor Wong? You're the mover, point two.
Oh, yeah, I can do that, just, just the as the topic that the director from the development review explained why we do that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, I'm going to be supporting this and thank you to KTC Tribal Health Clinic. I look forward to them being a partner with the city of Thompson in establishing this new kind of a medical clinic. It's well needed and I think we all know KTC has the 24 hour transportation service, which is very, very busy within our city. I think this just goes forward to move that the city of Thompson should be the hub of shared health for the northern Manitoba, and this is the next step in our lobby efforts to make the province be aware of that. So thank you, KTC, and look forward to working with them and I'll be supporting this, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, any other comments, councillor? Okay, seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor? 7.2 is the third reading of bylaw 20212022. Resolution 2022074, moved by Deputy Mayor Lenmark, seconded by councillor Dongino. Be resolved the bylaw 2021, that's 2022, be given third and final reading and that it shall no pass. Just to note, this will be a recorded vote. Administration, any comments?
No, I'm not confirming.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Lenmark, council mover?
Yes, my colleagues and institutions discussed for KTC Tribal Health Clinic in an area that's nearby hospital and a couple other medical facilities. It's a good thing that it's being put forward by KTC ourselves, which is not involved with health, but this is, as councillor Valentino said, this is also I think a good indication to our provincial government and their shared health strategy that we are to which we are, and it would be a logical thing to continue using this as a home for health. We're essentially located familiar with our own communities and they're familiar with us. Thank you.
Yeah, and I will, I will be meeting with Minister Gordon and I will definitely be putting out the support to the tribal council and other community entities toward us being the home, for shared health. Thank you. Any other comments, councillors? Seeing none, call for the question and a recorded vote, all those in favor? Councillor Fountain, councillor approved, councillor Wong, councillor Valentino, Mayor Smith, Deputy Mayor Lenmark, councillor Ellsworth, councillor McWhorter, councillor Culver, here. 7.3 is the second reading of bylaw number 20232022, competition, composition council. Resolution 2022076, moved by Deputy Mayor Lenmark, seconded by councillor Cook. Be resolved the bylaw 20232022, being a bylaw of the city of Thompson to establish the composition of council, be given a second reading. Administration?
At the February 22nd, committee of the whole meeting, there was a consensus as a council that the administration prepared the composition of council bylaw to decrease the number from eight to six. As section 79 to the municipal act, this would have to be passed within 180 days prior to the election. The first reading was given at the March 14, 2022, regular meeting of council. And it is now back before council for the second reading this evening.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Lenmark has moved.
There was some confusion about this earlier and then the last meeting. You know, they put on a survey, some people figured it was too short of a survey. But so my recollection of what we've done in the last three years, four years, three and a half years, the amount of councils that we need, especially with the community of the fourth, we continue with this, I think, so.
Thank you. Councillor McMyrdle?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I think the the surveys, there was a really strong bend towards reducing the size. But I think maybe if you put the question to Facebook, they might say, why stop that just from moving to seats of council, right? And I think as our CAO mentioned, only 1% roughly or whatever of the city did respond to that. I haven't been here for a full term, but I have been here for the reorganization in our, in the third year and for this recent reorganization to the committee at the whole just in the last couple of months. And while I I think the committee of all structure is working, I think it's, I think it's good that everybody is in the room together and we can disagree, but I think everybody has a chance to hear everybody's point of view and rationale and and big disagreements has a potential to be less personal and we can be more businesslike in here. With that, that said, that there there is still a conservative element in me that is saying and and warning that too many changes too quickly with unforeseen consequences and the potential for the next council to to revert back to the old organization. And and given the fact that we have had a short runway meeting for just, I think, two months as a committee of the whole and there, it's maybe not perfectly clear that that's the way, if the meetings are long. Many items on the agenda and I think that we want to be thorough. A couple of the reasons to switch were redundancies and costs, but I would argue that sometimes redundancies are maybe a good thing to make the right decision with the public first. I've really thought about this one a lot, but I I'm going to not be supporting it tonight and as much as I've tried to engage the public to speak on it, I haven't got a lot of feedback. But I I want to keep the way open for a future council to make this decision, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Valentino?
Thanks, Mr. Smith. For me, like, we have, this doesn't seem, in my opinion, it's not a big deal breaker to me, this whether we have 68, 18, 22, whatever, the people that get elected, the ones that are going to work hard and show up are the ones that are going to work hard and show up. So it's, I don't, it's not one of the top issues for me, this bylaw at all. We did bring it up in our last term of council to look at doing it, brought it forward again, this term of council, when I sit on the AMM board and talk to the municipalities, they have smaller amounts, so go to the vote for a smaller amount, but ultimately, when you get elected to do diligence, to do your work and show up and do what you can to make our city better, but I will be supporting for six, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Councillor Paul?
Thank you, yeah, I thought long and hard on this and going back and forth. And I do think there is a lot of work as a council, we don't just do just our council, we still have our other committees or other organizations we also sit on, and I do think for now that nine helps spread spread the work a little bit easier than six. So it would be nice to spend more time with the committee of the whole to see if it would would be feasible, but for now, I, I think, I'm on the, or not, I think I don't, I'm on the on the side of having, sticking with nine. Eight, well, what's going on?
Councillor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm always a big fans of reducing, so even the last term, I I can't talking about a lot, I will get the head from the house of council. Anyway, this term, in beginning of the year, beginning of the term, I did approach the mayor and say, I'm sticking, including. But after, I I go through this three and a half years of being in this term, I start looking at, I have a different opinion. What I wanted to read, the biggest reason to me is because we are facing a big challenge in the next term, which is we got 88 million dollars of ISIP funding. So we need more oversight and less oversight. And possibly we go have a new aquatic center as well. So those are the reasons, I think, we need more, not less. And the committee at whole, I mean, it is a change, I start getting used to it. And whether I agree with that, not necessarily. Because I've seen a lot of things that we do not discuss as what it used to be. Yes, it sounds like we are united up front now, we all sit on the same room and talking about making that decision, but a lot of things is still missing there. And and I think that we already did that to to move forward for the next term, we change the structure for next term. Now we try to change another thing for the next term, I think it's kind of unfair. I like to see, maybe perhaps it's the timing. I think eventually Thompson need to go to that direction. I think eventually Thompson need to go to that direction, which is reducing the member, council member. And right now, I think the timing and also based on the attendance required for the last three and a half years. If we go down to six council, let's say that some people have. Easy schedule due to work or family, uh, we will cancel meeting often. That part I would like to see it. So, uh, with that, I'd like to, uh, against this, uh, bylaw for this time and, uh. And that will be it. Thank you, Madame Yu.
Thank you, Council Frank.
Thank you, Madame Mayor. Um. I, I believe, uh, I was the person who brought this forward to bring it down to six. I believe the right number of counselors for the City of Thompson, six people. I am rarely swayed by, uh, my colleagues. When it comes to business in council, I have to say though, uh, this one is one of those rare exceptions where I've been swayed. I have. I could talk at length, but I think, uh, uh, all I need to say is. As an individual, I'm not pleased with the direction of the City of Thompson. I'm not talking about the official direction. I believe that's appropriate, but, uh, what I'm seeing outside happening to its infrastructure. And to, uh, what's happening to our parks and some of the other things, some of the rule breaking that happens in this place. I'd be willing to go on that, uh, and have a discussion anytime you are, Madame Mayor. I believe we need every set of eyes and every possible opposition person in this place until this city is, uh. Back on steady or ground. Currently, I don't believe it is. Uh, I believe if, um, citizens have been watching and seeing what's happened in the city, uh, they'll feel the same way I do. Just on Sunday, we lost a, another, uh, bit of infrastructure that the city was, uh, responsible for carrying and retaining. Through one way or the other, but, uh. For that reason, I believe that, uh, we, we cannot reduce the count number of counselors we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Ellsworth.
Thank you, Madame Mayor. Um, I've listened carefully to what my fellow counselors had to say. I agree with part of what Council Valentino said, part I don't. She's absolutely right when it comes to when we're elected, we have to do diligent and we shouldn't show up for meetings. I've said that from day one. And I'll say it again tonight. You've taken a hold of office and you shouldn't be here. In saying that, the survey, in my opinion. The survey can be slotted any way you like. It's not a simple yes and no answer. People need some background and I don't think that was provided like it should. And, and let me give you two, two things that happened in the last couple of years. Not the, the last budget. We had a group of people come here. I don't think there was one person that stood up. If you want to talk about survey, that said they were in front of the budget, but, but we passed the budget. We passed the budget. That's number one. Number two. On the community safety law being planned. I believe Anthony Correctman is wrong. We had, we had sixteen percent, you said?
That's correct.
Sixteen percent of, of three thousand people or thirteen thousand plus people. This one, you might have had one point two. Now, I appreciate and respect everyone votes, no matter what they would, but if you want to look at importance. People I believe that voted for the community safety law be was really engaged and wanted something done in Thompson. This one aired at Upland as a city. I don't think they, they, uh, they really cared one way or the other. I, I'm with, uh, Council McMyrdle, one on Facebook, they honestly got rid of all of us. Because of the way they feel out there. So at the end of the day, I could never support it. I said that from the start for a couple of reasons. Number one. Committee of the old, we haven't tried it long enough. I'm never, I wasn't in favor of committee of the old. I'm still not in favor. It takes a long, long night. And I believe it was Council Wong, the Senate and other counselors. Absolutely, we're going to work what, with what items is on the agenda for committee of the old, those that is brought forth by council. We do a pretty good job. No knocking it, but as what is not on the agenda. And I'm not blaming that administration, no more than I would blame council. There's a lot of things we don't talk about in this city. A lot of things, a lot of things is happening in our city and it's getting worse and worse and worse. And I, and I believe it was Council Fountain said it. Is that we need all eyes out there. We need everyone out there working hard to try to bring our city back to a place that people wants to live. They want to feel safe in, and I think reducing the council at this point would be absolutely wrong. Maybe we review this thing in the first year, after we've had a year, if, if we go that way with a new council, some of us won't be here to discuss that. But maybe at that time, we review it and say, you know what? Maybe we need to go down to six because we don't need eight. I'm okay with that. But right now, the committee of the old was not proven whether it's gonna work or not. We haven't done enough with it at this point. And I sure as that don't want, it might be there four or five hours or three or four hours, because we're here that long within town, we're in the community of the old. Uh, I'm a guy that, that likes to come in for a meeting, hour, hour and a half, because after two or three hours, you lose touch of what you're doing. You get tired. So definitely, I won't be in favor of it. And I certainly think the fellow counselors have spoken and have recognized that there might be some issues with it. I don't think anyone is saying we shouldn't do it maybe in the future, but warrants it. Right now, we're doing at the end of the term. Six months left, thirty you sell and another council, possibly not saying what happened for failure. You could in fact do that, uh, with all the money that we've got to, to, to look after things, the infrastructure, we do need everybody here. The crime we got, I wish we had another ten or fifteen people that want committed and see what we can come up with. So thank you, Madame Mayor, and I'll certainly, uh, will not be supporting moving forward with this resolution.
Thank you, Council Cooper.
Well, I don't support it, but while not supporting it, because it's not the right time. Like our executive assistant says, we got the April twenty-eighth to make up the months. You know, I think it's just another thing of this council, the trying to push through things. That is not needed right now. It's not well thought of, it's not well worked on, it does not need at this moment, right now. Because I don't know, why are we doing this? Why are we doing, say, money? To please the mayor? Is that what we're doing? It's stupid. We're taking council's time, canary's second time to work on this, but it's not needed. There's so many things in this city that's needed. And this is not one of them right now. It's not saving no money that we do reduce. So I'm not for it. I was never for it in the beginning. And, uh, even committee of the old, like I say, is, it hasn't been run long enough to see. I've been, I think I've been there, we won yet. It's not that, it's good conversations, right? But it's a lot different than the committees themselves. But in the committees themselves, you discuss more in detail what you do in the committee of the old. Well, it's a, it's a thing that I won't, uh, support. And I don't know if it's needed in the future, but I think it should be left to the next council, the G side. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've heard from everybody, so I just want to point it out that it was a counselor that brought it up. At a meeting, Council Fountain, and we all seem to be on the same page to explore it. And I think that is what this was a lesson in, was in exploring it. We went to the survey as requested. Uh, I talked to a lot of people. Uh, we got the data from other communities. So I think we did do our due diligence, but as in anything else, it is up to the counselors to vote. Each one of yous have done what you feel is your homework. I did mine, uh, by talking to people, following the survey, looking at the others, uh, the administration, uh, thing. So I do believe we're all gonna vote with our heart for this and, uh, wha- whatever what the outcome is, uh, will be left for the, for the next term of council. So thank you all. I appreciate all your comments and respect for each other tonight. So with that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of this resolution? Opposed? Okay, it is not carried. Thank you. Seven point four is the first reading of bylaw two zero two four, two zero two two. Use of municipal resources in an election bylaw. Resolution two zero two two, zero seven six, moved by Council Valentino, accepted by Council Ellsworth. Here is all the bylaw two zero two four, two zero two two, being a bylaw of the City of Thompson to establish. The use of municipal resources in an election bylaw. Election bylaw be introduced and read a first time. Administration?
Province has introduced changes to the municipal act, which require each municipal council in the province. To adopt one of these municipal resources and election bylaw. This has been brought forward by the administrations in the template that was built by the province. And incorporated feedback and comments from council. It's been circulated through the committee, the whole, this before council tonight for the first meeting. This is required by the province that this be passed by April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, so that it's in place a hundred and eighty days before the next general municipal election. It would govern the use of municipal resources during the forty-two J period before a general election or by-election.
Thank you, Council Valentino?
I thank you, Mr. Smith. I'll be supporting the first reading of this, but I also think it's a good opportunity for those that are going to A M M to. Network with other municipalities to see their feelings in this new change that's come forth from the province regarding this, but I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, uh, Council Ellsworth?
Thank you, Madame Mayor. Do we have the past resolution? You're saying we've got to do that on this?
It has to be passed as a bylaw, so it requires three meetings.
Okay, so. So the forty-two days. So just to be clear. A mayor candidate can apply May the first, is that correct?
So running for mayor can be applied for, uh, week first to claim candidacy and for a council, I believe is on June first.
So I just want to be clear, we want to be charged in a row. From May the first up to the forty-two days that would proceed then. A mayor candidate can use resources, is that true?
This only pertains to forty-two days before the election.
Right, so May the first up to that point. In other words, a, a, a male candidate can get their pictures taken with any event going on. You know what I'm saying? Like any of that stuff up till the forty-two days that, that you have to abide if we pass this by.
Yep, so this bylaw only applies to municipal resources within twenty-two days of municipal general election or by-election.
Okay, thank you, Anthony, Mayor.
Council Frank?
Thank you, Madame Mayor. This is a, oh, needed legislation, I think. Very happy to see this. I, I don't, uh, appreciate watching politicians. Quote-unquote campaign on the public dime. Uh, I wish this term was longer. I'll be supporting this wholeheartedly with two hands and two fists. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council Wong?
Thank you, Madame Yu. This bylaw basically is a blackout section, I believe. That's what they call the province. But I, I, I think there's a little bit of loophole over there. So I believe the bylaw should be written such a way, like, the moment you announce, there should be. Stop, not forty-two days. That's my, my opinion. And another question is about the fines. So is that the standard or just a suggestion, five thousand dollars?
Okay.
The offense is directly under the municipal act. Only change would be to add six months of jail. Under the municipal activity, that's five thousand dollars, six months in jail. If council wants us to add that, we can add.
Sure, I'm all for it.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Uh, so, okay, thank you. Uh, so the fine can be, can be, can be changes if you, if you all wish to, right?
I believe that's a decision of council, but the recommendation from the province is to base on some other existing statute in the province. So there's some sort of basis behind it.
I, I believe the fine should be more significant, otherwise it's no, 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 no force to it. So that's my opinion. And the sixth one, I'm thinking about this at first reading anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madame. I just want to be clear that we're the third level of government, so, uh, everyone in this room is politician. So let's be clear with that. When you're speaking, you could be speaking with yourself. So you are a politician, whether you choose to believe that or not. That's what you are. Thank you, Madame.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, so my interpretation of this, that even I as mayor. Like, uh, let's say, uh, National Children's Day is going to fall within, uh, you know, the campaign. So if I chose to run and I still wouldn't be allowed as running mayor to attend those events, right, I think? As mayor.
We would have to look at those on a case-by-case basis. I believe members of council can attend on behalf of council, but cannot promote themselves as their position. So this is a very new bylaw. Um, as Council Valentino said, it's likely worth some discussion at A M M. Because even, even the province is questioning how some parts of this are going to work.
Thank you. Any others?
Uh, what is the possibility that we can come up with? Like, is this something that has to be done through all this, by for changes, or can we make our own?
No, it's up to council what they wanted to add. So that was a request that the council has had, things they wanted to be added in, just send them over to T A B. Those have been reviewed as part of the committee of the whole, but we do have to have a bylaw in place by April twenty-nine.
Yeah, Madame Mayor. So, so my understanding, this is no different than any other legislation. This is the minimum. We can make a strong word if we like. Is that correct, Anthony?
Yes, any council can have what they'd like to it. So the template was provided to us, which is very basic. And the administrative team has put together additional parts, uh, based on what we've had discussions with the province and other communities brought that forward.
Thank you. Uh, is there time sensitive for this or no?
Yes.
Yes, it's April twenty-ninth. So it has to have second and third, so he's writing it.
Just for, I, I believe every time in the bylaw, we are to change something. We have, we have to totally start all working in my right, uh, administration.
No, you can amend a bylaw, so you don't have to throw bylaw out and start from scratch. You can take bylaws exist and amend parts. And then it becomes a bylaw as amended by.
So we could take this bylaw as it is having approved by the twenty-ninth and then put some amendments in right after.
We would have to talk to the province. I believe that the, the bylaw that's in place a hundred and eighty days before, by April twenty-ninth, is the bylaw that stands.
Okay, so if anybody has any suggestions, they would have to go to T A B to change the next.
There's, it'd be good, I, I think it was, uh, Council Valentino spoke to or someone that. Be good when we go today and then that we, we, you know, look and, and talk about this and understand the do's and the don'ts, but you really don't understand really what is it. You can do what you can't do so to get a broader, so then when we come back for the second and third reading, we have a better understanding. Thank you.
Any others, uh, call for a call?
Yeah, thank you. Just, uh, if we wish to do changes, that resets the process, which we won't be able to, likely the, the timeline unless we have a special meeting, correct?
Changes will then have to be circulated, so the council has time to review them, so we won't be making changes in the room. They have to be done ahead of time, then council has the opportunity to review it, and it likely would require special meetings to make it happen.
Right, okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
I was just gonna ask the same thing, as I didn't think that we, I thought it's, it's stolen, because unless we. Oh, not, especially the council, there's not gonna be two meetings for first and then the second and third, we, we, we.
All right, so any suggestions, uh, getting to the time as soon as possible, if we go to A M M and hear some things, it would be important to get them back there. Uh, call for a German?
We still have to call over a question on the bylaw.
Oh, I'm sorry, you guys. All those in favor? Okay, it's carried. Call for a German, Council Valentino, Council Pro, all in favor. Thank you.